Good for a.
I'm looking at, I want a couple more.
Whatever you want.
Hey Steve, did you know that works good if you've got a big bag of dog food and you took two rolls on the stick?
Morning, how are you?
And you keep it fresh.
Absolutely. That's a forty pounder.
That's a fifty pounder.
This one's okay. Okay. Great, thank you.
You got that emailed, didn't you?
Yeah. That was.
Safe at nine thousand.
Wanted to get that meeting started promptly at nine AM while Supervisor Shucklian was still walking around making her look unprepared. Thank you for joining us for today's meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We are going to take up item number one on our agenda, or before the numbered items, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance and then it will be followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Not On Time Supervisor Shucklian.
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe see. All right, we're going to take up item number one now at this time, and that's Board of Supervisors Matters, and we will begin with Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, sir. Last week I missed the meeting of us in Washington DC with the San Joaquin Valley Air Push Control District Governing Board of several members and our executive officer and executive team. And we had a great meeting with Scott Pruitt, who is the now appointee of the current administration for the EPA Administrator. Mr. Pruitt was the former Attorney General for the State of Oklahoma, spent much of his time suing the federal EPA. So it was, it's a breath of fresh air to have him actually running the organization. And we were one of the very first groups to get to meet with him. And originally he came in the meeting, was just going to sort of shake our hands and then leave us to some subordinates, but after hearing a quick story about our danger, our problems with the ninth agency out here in San Francisco, he said, well, I will be back. And so he, before we left the meeting, he came back with his chief counsel and met with us, and I think we're going to be seeing some relief from our circumstances. We also were there for the purpose of our executive director to testify at a subcommittee for commerce on a bill proposed by Congressman Olson from Texas that would incorporate the language that says if the only reason we're not complying with air quality standards is because of pollution which comes from sources outside of our jurisdictional authority, that we would not be penalized for that. And every time we talked to people about that, even some of the more liberal congressmen, they can't disagree with that logic. So hopefully we'll see some relief there too. So it was a very good, very good trip to DC. We met with other congressmen and senators representatives, so hopefully we'll see some fruit from that. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right, Supervisor Crocker.
Yesterday we had a, an East Quahia GSA Ground Sustainability Agency meeting, and I'm happy to report that the GSA Board approved a new map that has no overlap issues. So we've been working on this for about three long, hard months to try and get some resolution. It's, it's not exactly over yet, there's still a little bit of fine tuning that needs to happen over the next couple of weeks. So it's not exactly the finish line, but it's, we're real close. And the Greater Quahia obviously has to approve of a similar map that has no overlaps to move forward. And so, but we are moving forward, and I'm happy to say that. And what that exactly means is that the Quahia sub-basin is no longer in, out of compliance with the Department of Water Resources of the State of California. And so that, if they are out of compliance, then the state has authority to come in and make groundwater plans for us, rather than us determining our own destiny and having a huge say in that. So for local farmers, for local communities, and for Tulare County, it's a big deal for us. The Quahia sub-basin has a majority of the county as far as the populace and as far as the geographic area on the valley floor, and includes the cities of Tulare and Visalia and Farmersville and Exeter and Lindsay and, and all kinds of other smaller communities within. So it's, it's a, it's a great thing, and I'm very glad that, that the individuals in the different irrigation districts and the farmers and county staff all helped to try and get us to this point. So yesterday afternoon was a great, was a great day. That's all I have to report.
All right, we're very excited that you had a great day yesterday Supervisor.
Me too.
We'll talk now from, we'll hear now from Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday we met with the tribe in Porterville. We had representatives from the county, all the county agencies involved, the city, all the city agencies involved, trying to work towards a MOU to move the casino to Porterville. I think we've still got a lot of work to do. They seem to think that things were pretty well on their way to being done, and I really don't think they are because we're still discussing within, and I think the sheriff and PA and everybody is trying to figure out what it's going to take to support this casino when they move it to Porterville. And in reality, we're not wanting to make a dime on this, we just want to make sure that we're made whole on what we, the services that we do for the casino. We're still waiting for our RMA folks to come up with, going at the traffic survey and stuff and see what roads would probably be affected. But we will hammer this out down the road, but they seem to be in a big hurry, and like we tell them, we've got to decide what it's going to cost and what it's going to take from the county. The city's in the same boat, the city's trying to just figure that too. But I think we'll get there, but it's just going to take a little time. I'm not against the project, but I still think that the county needs to be made whole as far as moving the casino to Porterville. I think it's going to be good for everybody, but in the long run, but just need to get short run things done now so that it can move forward. Tomorrow I'll be leaving for Monterey for a three-day CalCog meeting, Tulare County Association of Governments. It's tough duty, somebody's got to do it. But kind of looking forward to that. And then next Monday I'll be speaking at the Women's Club in Porterville for their luncheon meeting, so that's all I have, thank you.
All right, Supervisor Shucklian.
Oh yes, Friday I went to Modesto to attend the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, which is also known as the Amtrak Committee. And again, we're discussing express service from Fresno to Sacramento that would get business travelers into Sacramento by eight AM. And I'm, I'm trying to bring into it maybe the city of Visalia, V Line, maybe being able to make some trips to the Amtrak station in accordance with their already trips to Fresno State and the airport. And also they're interested in, in working more with Sequoia National Park on some partnering, and also the World Ag Expo. So just some things that they're working on for the, to bring that type of commuter service into the county. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, a few items that I wanted to go over today. First of all, I wanted to congratulate 2017's Farmer of the Year as awarded by the Tulare Noon Kiwanis Club, and that is Doug Maderos. He was definitely a great farmer and has done a lot of wonderful things in the community and is certainly much more well-liked than his brother Dennis. So congratulations to Doug. I'm kidding, Dennis isn't here, so you gotta take, take a shot when you can. He's an attorney. But real congratulations to him, and he's joining the ranks of many well-respected farmers and honorees in the city of Tulare. Also want to congratulate Ken Swerengen, who is an employee with Tulare County in the auditor, I'm sorry, the Assessor's Office. He has put up with Roland Hill for forty years, and he is retiring this week, but I think he is specifically deserving of being mentioned, and congratulations to him on his retirement. Lastly, I wanted to highlight an event that's taking place benefiting the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Sequoias, and that is a Comics for Kids event that is taking place at the TDS Hall in the city of Tulare this Saturday at five thirty. They do a great job raising money for that program, and I sure appreciate all the work that they do, and that's being put on by the Tulare Sunrise Rotary, so thank you to them.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing?
Go ahead. You can have another bite at the apple.
I appreciate it, it's a healthy week, so we need apples. I also want to add to that regarding the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, there's a new program, it's been run on some of the other lines, but it's been added to the San Joaquin Corridor, and that is a law enforcement, I shouldn't say rate, because law enforcement, should they ride the Amtrak, they can ride for free, but they need to be willing to help out on the train should there be any type of incident. And it's worked very well with the other corridors. Sheriff, you want to mention that? It's just for the, the law enforcement personnel only, not families, but the Amtrak is a, is a nice trip, and they could ride for free if they are willing to help out should there be any incident on the train.
Where aside on?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you for that.
I have mine.
We will now move on to item number two on our agenda. We are going to adopt a resolution proclaiming the first full week in April 2017 to be Healthy Tulare County Week, coinciding with National Public Health Week with the theme of Make a Small Change. And I will turn the microphone over to Supervisor Shucklian and also Dr. Hott. You know, it's nice to have another advocate for health and well-being on the Board of Supervisors, and Supervisor Shucklian, my former, the, the rest of the board over here, prior to Supervisor Shucklian joining, always made me be the healthy guy, so I'm glad that there's.
And as you can see, I am a picture of health up here.
We're trying to improve Amy's life too, so go ahead.
Oh, you'll see, give me a few more months. All right, Dr. Hott, Nilsa, and, okay. See, boy, this writing is small. Whereas, public health is what we as a society do collectively to assure the conditions for people to be healthy and strong. Public health systems are critical for sustaining and improving community health. Preventable chronic diseases such as heart disease, cancer, and diabetes are responsible for millions of premature deaths in the US each year. Emerging and existing communicable diseases such as HIV/AIDS, tuberculosis, influenza, hepatitis, syphilis, gonorrhea, and whooping cough can threaten the lives and well-being of residents. Health is determined by factors such as social policy, environment, and education. New policies should be assessed to understand potential health impacts. Evidence-based public health and prevention policies result in healthier communities and reduce costs of treating disease. Research shows that right investments in workplace wellness programs can reap positive impacts on workers' health and healthcare costs, making prevention good business sense. Improving access to healthy foods and beverages, encouraging physical activity, reducing access to tobacco products, and implementing high-impact quality clinical and preventative services will improve the health of the county. Promoting unity in our community can add to the social and emotional well-being of all residents and be the foundation for a healthy community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby declare the week of April third through eighth, 2017, to be Healthy Tulare County Week, to coincide with National Public Health Week. The Board calls upon residents, public and private institutions, community organizations, businesses, and schools in Tulare County to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of the detriments of health and to make a small change toward better health for all. And I would just like to add, since I've been here, it's, it's always a joy, one day I'll join, but to see the folks walking, county employees walking out along the path and all that, so we encourage that every day. So with that, Nilsa, doctor.
Thank you.
Here you go, here's your, and if you'd like to say anything, words of encouragement, it's always helpful.
Well, I'd, I'd like to thank all the members of the Board, Chairman, and CAO, and County Council for having, making us this proclamation today for the week of April third. And we have a whole schedule of events that are occurring throughout the week of April third that highlight how we can all make a change to help our, improve the health of our families and our communities. There's many themes for each day, healthy eating, healthy living, active living, community unity, and knowing our numbers, or knowing our blood pressure and our diabetes risk. So please look at the schedule, that'll be on the county website, and I've shared a paper copy here with the Board. And there's also free transportation through TCAT and Visalia Transit to any of the events, so please join in in this taking steps towards health. Thank you.
Right here, right here.
Yeah, you want to get the seal, got to get the seal, got to hide the chair. Yeah, hide the chair.
They just don't want me in the back, that's why.
Stand up.
I am.
I am standing.
You're not on there.
I wanted to put my head right back there in the back.
Thank you very much for that proclamation. Nice job, Amy, that was your first one. I wanted to really thank Dr. Hott and our Public Health Department and also the Tulare County Health Advisory Committee that I have been a part of and chaired for several years leading up to this one, and then Supervisor Shucklian took over for me. But if you look at this calendar of the activities that are taking place this week, when we started off Healthy Tulare County Week a few years ago, we had, I think it was a one-page sheet, maybe front and back, but now this is seven pages, six pages of activities that are taking place this week related to Healthy Tulare County Week and National Public Health Week. I think it's just a fantastic thing that the committee has embraced this and is running forward with it, and really just trying to spread the awareness about public health and well-being. I do think that that's going to really go a long ways in helping to improve the health, the overall health and well-being of our communities. So very glad to see this thing move forward and glad to support it. This is an action item?
Move for approval.
A motion from Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shucklian, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're going to move on to item number three, which is a presentation to adopt a resolution proclaiming April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Tulare County. I'm going to call forward Ramona to go ahead and give a brief presentation, and I will present the proclamation.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. I'm Ramona Chiapa, I'm the new Executive Director of the Tulare County Child Abuse Prevention Council. While my presentation is getting loaded, I just wanted to note that we have Board members present, and we also have our parent agency collaborative effort, Parents, our PACE Parents, in the audience with us this morning. We've got quite a large section in the back, so I'm really appreciative to have the support. Obviously, as a council, we are a collaborative group of individuals that work together towards a common cause, so I think this is evidence of, of that definitely today. Just some county statistics, it's been a while since we last presented to all of you, so I wanted to get you updated on kind of where we've been. So we have a strong partnership with Tulare County HHSA and also Child Welfare Services that we're very appreciative of, and they keep us up to date on data and statistics on what's happening here in our county as it relates to child abuse and neglect. And you can see that in 2016, total allegations equated to over fifteen thousand. And when you talk about allegations, this could be multiple allegations for one child, so that number seems awfully large, but just keep in mind that one child could have multiple allegations associated with them. And then there's some data and statistics about the types of abuse that we typically see. And as you can see, most prevalent here in Tulare County is neglect and severe neglect. So we've got a lot of work to do in that particular area. Then off to the right, you see that we've got some statistics about how many of those reports were evaluated out, how many were substantiated, you know, how many were inconclusive, and how many were unfounded. So just good information for you to all be aware of, and I'll get you some more recent information, and we'll go to 2016. So you can see that in 2016, the number of reports that came in saw a dramatic increase of about roughly two thousand reports. I'd like to think and hope that we see this increase as a result of our efforts in promoting awareness about what child abuse and neglect is, and then how to report. We have multiple agencies and organizations working together to get the word out about making the report, the hotline number, and I think that although we don't have conclusive data to support that, I believe that that's a strong case in my opinion. Again, you can see that staggering neglect and severe neglect is still our top, our top issue here in Tulare County. One thing to note is you'll notice a new line item, which is exploitation. So now the Child Welfare Services staff is now tracking victims of commercially sexually exploi- commercially sec- excuse me, commercially sexually exploited children, excuse me. I'm so used to saying CSECs, so I never have to say it all the way through, excuse me. So again, there's a lot of work to be done here in Tulare County, but hopefully as I go over some of the things that we've been doing, you can see the efforts that we've been making. Just to provide you with a comparison, this is some data from kiddata.org showing a comparison in 2015 of reports comparing California to Tulare County. So you can see the number of reports per one thousand kids is dramatically larger here in Tulare County than it is for our state. So something that we need to be concerned with, and I think that we need to be taking action with, which is why we're here today. And again, comparison of California to Tulare County, so you can see the types of abuse here. This large red bar at the forty-six point two percent, that's your general neglect. So again, not only is it an issue here for us in Tulare County, but it's a statewide issue as well. And here are the Tulare County numbers. And I recognize it's a little hard to see, so hopefully, but I think it definitely tells a story. And these are the actual substantiated cases, so in California, sixty-six point nine percent of neglect cases are substantiated, okay? And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, just wanted to give you kind of a brief overview. And here in Tulare County, seventy-one point six percent of our general neglect cases are actually substantiated. So not only are they being reported, but they're being substantiated as well. So why, why is this important, and why is this something that we need to be thinking about? There's, there was a study that Kaiser Permanente did in collaboration with other entities on adverse childhood experiences, and some examples of ACES, as we like to refer to them, are abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. So these are things that if a child is exposed to them, can have some severe long-term effects for a child over time, even into adulthood. And that's why we as residents of this county need to be aware and also need to take action. It's, it's not just for today, it's also for the future of our county and for our kids. So if you can see off to the left, you can see that ACES are pretty prevalent. Abuse is at the top, with physical abuse being one of the top issues and ACES that individuals experience, and it goes on down to neglect, and then household dysfunction, including parental divorce, financial constraints, and so on and so forth. So what does that mean, and how does that impact children long-term? Children who experience an adverse childhood experience, whether it's one, two, three, or four, the more that they experience in their childhood, the more likely that they are to have long-term effects, whether it's behavioral problems, alcoholism, drug abuse, they might have physical and mental health issues, perhaps depression, diabetes, COPD, higher risks of cancer and stroke. So there's health impacts associated to this as well, so this is why we should all have a vested interest in our children. So just some further statistics about us as a county to kind of drive the information home. This is a, just a comparison of the county's median family income, and as you can see that we remain far below state and national levels. And so I'll get into why this is important, but you know, things are interconnected, and this is certainly one of those factors for us. So our median income in Tulare County is about forty-six thousand, a little over forty-six thousand. We were thirty-seven percent less than the state and thirty-two percent less than the nation. I think that's pretty staggering. Now let's compound that and talk about housing here in Tulare County. Virtually nowhere in our county can a single parent working a full-time minimum wage job afford a two-bedroom apartment. When I was looking at the data and statistics for this particular presentation, I got chills. It's, it's scary and it's, it's sad, especially thinking about these individuals having children associated with them. So in 2016, estimates indicate that a renter in Tulare County needs to work, to earn fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents an hour, working a forty-hour week to afford a two-bedroom apartment. However, a minimum wage worker in Tulare County has to work sixty-three point five hours per week to afford rent for a two-bedroom rental unit. And I don't know about you, but I don't know how many jobs out there are giving sixty-three point five hours to employees on a regular basis, so a sobering, sobering statistic. Then we can talk about the living wage here in Tulare County. A single mother in our county would need to work three full-time jobs to earn the living wage on a minimum wage income here in our county. Then talking about that mother having two children, she would need to make twenty-six point, twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents per hour, which is nearly three times the 2016 minimum wage of ten dollars, just to make that livable wage here in our county. This parent, if they were working a minimum wage job, would need to work a hundred and seven hours per week just to make a livable wage here in our county. So why is this important, and why is this something that's related to child abuse? Because families in crisis are more likely to have child abuse creep up into their lives. Poverty certainly isn't an indicator of abuse or neglect. Child abuse and neglect certainly doesn't discriminate against any socioeconomic class, but that's a stressor that just magnifies the problem for our families and for our children. And that's why these statistics are important, because if you can imagine the amount of stress that and strain that this puts on a family as far as economics and being able to provide for your family, that's tremendous, I think. So getting back to how this all relates and what we do as an organization, as I mentioned, we have a lot of our council members here. We are a council that's, that works on collaboration and partnerships to prevent child abuse and neglect here in our county. That's our focus. So we are comprised of many agencies and organizations that work together and come together for a common purpose and a common goal. And this is just kind of a snapshot of the organizations that are involved in our council, it's certainly not an exhaustive list, so I apologize to any of our members who aren't listed. There was, there was quite a few. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what we've been doing. Again, since it's been a few, a few years since we've come and presented, I wanted to give you a snapshot. So this is just some milestones that we achieved in 2015, most notably having purchased the LISA Project in coordination with the San Joaquin County Child Abuse Prevention Council, they are the, the originators of the LISA Project. We had Farmersville proclaim itself a community for child well-being, which was huge for us in our county, something that I know Billy Shaw, my predecessor, was incredibly instrumental in bringing forward, and I think it's a very proud moment for her. So just some snapshots. The LISA Project was purchased in February, and its initial debut was at our tenth annual Cynthia Lockhart Mumery Conference, so there's just a snapshot of individuals that attended. We got a lot of support, because we have a large council, we get a lot of support in all the things that we do. As I mentioned, our, our conference was where we debuted the LISA Project for the very first And then here's some snapshots from our Farmersville Community for Child Well-Being. It's important to note, I mentioned the PACE Parents that are here in the audience. The PACE Parents in Farmersville were instrumental in getting this, this, this movement going in the city of Farmersville. They went out and got signatures and petitions, got over seven hundred signatures in the city of Farmersville to get the city to move forward with making it a community for child well-being. Some 2016 milestones, we had our bench dedication, many of you joined us, and thank you for that, for the support that you provided in April of 2016. I came on board in June, and Billy Shaw retired at the end of June, so we had a nice overlap and transition period, which I think was fantastic for us as an agency in terms of continuity. We're really excited about the future for the organization, and then, as you'll see, Woodlake proclaimed itself a community for child well-being. So we're working towards replication, and our goal and our hope would be that eventually every city in Tulare County would be a community for child well-being, because I think that's really where our focus needs to be if we really want to see some changes here in our county. Just some snapshots, we had great participation and support at the bench dedication. Billy Shaw's retirement. I just want to say that Billy had a lot of passion, so there's some big shoes to fill, certainly for me coming in as, as the new Executive Director, but I believe I'm certainly for me coming in as the new executive director, but I believe I'm up for the challenge and I'm excited to see where the future of the organization goes. And here's some snapshots from our Woodlake for Community Child Well-Being proclamation. If you'd like to see a video of that proclamation, it's on our website with some great words from Rudy Mendoza, Mayor of Woodlake. Some additional milestones for 2016. We received recognition, Farmersville I should say, received recognition for being a community for child well-being by the State Assembly. So Devin Mathis was so impressed with that movement that he decided to recognize the community, and so we actually went to the State Capitol. As you can see, we've been busy the last part of the year, so we've got a lot going on. This is just some snapshots of us visiting the State Assembly for the recognition. We've been working on strategic planning. So now that we've transitioned from Billy to myself, you know, our strategic plan ended in 2015, so we felt like this was a perfect opportunity with leadership change to also look to the future of what CAPC is and what we're going to be doing in our county and how we can make some changes. Are we going to continue moving forward with efforts or are we going to change? So some things that we look forward to doing, like I mentioned, we want to expand and replicate the community for child well-being throughout Tulare County. So Woodlake has proclaimed itself a community for child well-being, and we have a garden dedication that will be happening at the end of the month, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And then we will also be, the city of Lindsay is exploring the opportunity to become a community for child well-being. Through our strategic planning process, we are talking about building a manual and an assessment tool so that communities know what it would take to take on that effort, and we're really excited about what that future holds for us. Being that Tulare County has a lot of, we're a very expansive county as far as land is concerned, so we're having conversations about maybe having micro CAPC meetings so we can engage the outlying communities into our efforts. Being a Porterville native myself in South County, I recognize that a lot of times it's difficult when everything's converged here in the central part of our county, so we need to make an effort to get more input and get more buy-in from the outlying community. As I mentioned, we have a strong partnership with the County Health and Human Services Agency and Child Welfare Services. So we're going to continue doing mandated reporter trainings. This is something that we do as a partnership, so we go to schools, organizations, and provide trainings as needed and requested. And I think this has really helped us to get a message out about what we're doing as an organization. But we're also exploring new evidence-based training opportunities that we can provide in our county as well. And as far as the LISA project intent, being that it's been a little over a year since we purchased the exhibit, I had a meeting with Jean Harden, who was the creator of the exhibit. Tulare County at this time is the only county that has its own exhibit that can go on the road and travel as a modular exhibit. They, at the San Joaquin County Child Abuse Prevention Council, feel pretty confident that they would like to see us serve Southern California with the LISA project. So this will be a funding source for us. They are very impressed with the partnership that I know our council members and Billy built when we brought the LISA project to Tulare County. And to date, Tulare County still holds the record for the second-largest number of attendees going through the LISA project, I believe, back in 2012, over 7,000. The largest that they had was about 10,000 attendees, and that was in Riverside County. So just to put that in a perspective. So we have lots of events and activities happening throughout the county for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I would welcome and invite you all to attend. We have student action clubs from the various high schools, so Golden West, Mount Whitney, Redwood here in Visalia that are doing events and activities on their campuses. We'll be tying blue ribbons throughout downtown Visalia this Saturday from 8 to noon. We have our Child Abuse Prevention Forum, which is coming up on April the 4th at Cafe 210. So we're inviting some of our partner agencies to do a presentation and share about what they do, and we'll be talking a little bit more about us as an agency. The Woodlake Family Resource Center is having an ice cream social. Lindsay Family Resource Center will be in the Orange Blossom Festival. Parenti Networks having a superhero event, and the list goes on and on. And I actually have a packet of materials that I'll be providing for you that has all the dates and information for you as well. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your continued support over the last 30-plus years that CAPC has been in existence, and again, please join us for our events this April.
All right, Ramona, thank you for that presentation. That was very detailed and much appreciated. It's hard to imagine that, right here in our own county, that there are 10,000 cases approximately of child abuse that are reported each year. That's a rather sobering fact, and having two kids of my own, it's hard to imagine any child ever being abused. So I know that different situations may cause that, but there's never a justification for abusing a child. So with that, I will present this proclamation recognizing April of 2017 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Tulare County. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2015, 4 million reports were made to Child Protective Services. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas children are the most valuable resources and will shape the future of our county, child abuse can result in long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can lead to lifelong consequences for victims. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. We must work together as a community to increase awareness regarding child abuse. We must contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize April 2017 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Tulare County and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. This proclamation is signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklian, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Thank you so much.
Little marks on the floor like they do on stage.
This is an action item. If anybody wants to make comments, you're welcome to do so as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, first I would like to say I think Billy Shaw has a great replacement. I've known Billy for many years and I'm very impressed with Norma. One thing I did want to say is that first and foremost, thank you to the organizations and the individuals who make up those organizations, who stand in the gap to try to help these children and their families. But I also have to, as we speak here as a policy body, of course, we don't, our policies are limited to the county of Tulare, but I have to say that I think when we look at these statistics, it's a result of an erosion of the family that's gone on for the last 60 years. And when you look at the great society and this concept that takes a village to raise its child, I don't have a problem with that, but when the government tries to raise a child, it doesn't work. And if we don't have strong and intact families, there's no amount of government programs, partnerships, whatever, that can fill the gap of a strong and intact family. And so I really hope that as we look at this problem holistically, that those who do have the power and policy at the state level, the federal level, will really examine these federal programs and say, are we really helping children? Are we helping families? Or are we destroying them? Because in many cases, we do not have intact families because of federal programs that have really attempted to usurp that responsibility. And I know I'm speaking beyond the authority of this group of people, but I just can't help but say this, because I really feel like, as Pete was saying, you know, you can't imagine it happening in your own family, but you have to realize that in many cases, we're almost the exception to the rule where you have an intact family of a biological father and mother staying together, raising a family from the time they're born until the time they leave the home. That almost gets to be the exception, not the rule. That was not the way it was back before 1964. And so with that, I don't want to take away from the fact that I really appreciate the effort that people make to make a difference in children's lives, so thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Supervisor. Any additional comments?
No, just thank you, Ramona, for a great presentation and thank for all the groups that do so much. And I can't help but think that a lot of this is tied to alcohol and drug abuse too, and we need to get a handle on that, because people that are out of control are out of control and they take it out on their children. So that's something we need to look very strongly at. Thank you for a great presentation and bringing this to light so we can see the numbers. Thank you.
Same here, and also it's nice to see, I know there's a lot of collaboration between our county staff and your organization, and again, to protect the most vulnerable of our community. Thank you very much, I commend you.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis. Did you make that motion?
I made that motion, yes.
And we have a second from Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we will now move on to item number four on our agenda, which is public comment. I have right now a request for, from Mary Bryant to speak. There are several requests related to item number 24. I will take up those requests at that time. If there's anybody else wishing to speak under public comment, please do come forward and state your name and address for the record. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. We will begin public comment today with Mary Bryant.
Here, Mary Bryant, The Real Moonie Grove Project. On behalf of The Real Moonie Grove Project, we want to welcome to the board Amy Shucklian, and to Kyler Crocker, and to New Beginnings. The Real Moonie Grove Project's purpose is to restore Tulare County's grand jewel, crown jewel, to the magical place it once was so very long ago. Our group is now nearly 4,000 members strong. Memory's picture site is now 2,000 members, and my own site is now nearly 3,000 members. We have active members and supporters from as far away as Uganda, Africa, all across this nation, and in our own backyard. Again, welcome to the board, Amy Shucklian, Mr. Crocker, to New Beginnings, Mary Bryant, The Real Moonie Grove Project.
All right, thank you. Are there any additional requests to speak under public comment at this time? Okay, Mr. Sam Shaka, who needs no introduction.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the few minutes that I have with you today. I am here for another topic that's on your agenda, but I also wanted to take this time to invite you and give you some statistics of what's been happening here in our city and in our underlying counties. Downtown Visalia currently has over 100,000 square feet of upstairs commercial space that's empty, this not being taxed, that's no longer being utilized, that there's not any taxation coming from that space. It's been that way for 75 to 80 years. My wife and I took upon a project four and a half years ago, and I'm going to share that with you today, because we now have residential housing in downtown Visalia that's almost completely filled, with a grand opening taking place on April the 6th. So all of you are invited to come see this. This is another way that we're generating income for downtown Visalia, for the county, as far as taxation, as far as watchdogs that are watching our downtown at night when everybody else has gone home. We have found it to be an absolute plus. So on April the 6th, starting at 9 o'clock, Father Rod from the San Anthony's Catholic Church is going to be there, because he told me I need all the help I can get that day. So I invite the staff, the supervisors, and all in attendance to share that day with me, to see what it's like to have residential housing in downtown Visalia. Thank you very much.
I think you need the Pope, Sam.
All right, are there any additional requests to speak under public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. We will now take up the consent calendar before we get to our 9:30 timed items real quick. On the consent calendar, we will be pulling item number 16 completely from calendar. Item number 25 will be pulled completely from the calendar as well, and item number 21 will be pulled for separate consideration. Is there any additional item that the board members or members of the public would like to have pulled this time?
Motion to approve the balance of consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now we will take up item number 21 at this time. And I'd like to ask Mr. Howard, or Luke, or Nicole, or someone from Solid Ways to come forward.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. CAO and Council, Nicole Riley, Fiscal Manager with the Solid Ways Department. The item before you today is to approve an amendment to the franchise agreement with Waste Management, USA Waste of California, that would amend the rate adjustment methodology that's set forth in that franchise agreement. What we would like to bring to your attention today is that in the agenda item, it states that the only hauler to sign that agreement is Waste Management. So when we submitted the agenda item, that was the only hauler at that time that had agreed to those terms and conditions set forth. We have then been contacted by all of the remaining franchise haulers, and they have all agreed to the same exact terms and conditions as Waste Management. So we wanted to make sure that the board was aware that that was going on, and it's to your discretion and Council's recommendations whether or not we want to amend that today, but those agreements have been signed by all of the remaining haulers and are here today for your consideration.
Council?
Yes, so the board may add an urgent item to the agenda, but it needs to meet two requirements. First, that there is a need to take immediate action, and second, that the need for action came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted. Here, the franchise agreement with the additional five solid waste haulers, which are Tully Trash, Miramonte Sanitation, Mid Valley Disposal, Peña's Disposal, and South Tulare Rich Cove Rush Refuse, have also signed amendments. And we learned this after the agenda was posted. The approval of this amendment must be done before April 1st, and that is so that we can meet the contractual obligations of the agreements regarding the rate setting, and also to make sure that we give the appropriate notice to customers as required. So the board...
Based upon Council's recommendation of the findings, I would move that we hear this matter as an urgent item.
Second.
A motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please vote. This is urgent.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Any public comments before we take a vote on this item? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thanks, staff. Okay, now we are going to move on to our 9:30 timed item, which is a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to review and accept Tulare County's 2016 Annual General Plan and Housing Element Progress Reports. Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman. Mike Washam, RMA. As I get this loaded, if I can get rid of the... This is the time annually that we all come to the board, and true UCLA fans say wait till next year.
Hey, but you're still wearing blues supporting the team though, Mike.
I'm a true Blue, so for sure. Today, we're here for our annual general plan and housing element progress report. Every year, via government code, we're required to make a presentation to our local legislative body to discuss and show how we've been implementing the general plan, as well as part of that is the housing element implementation as well. So before I start with our presentation today, I'd just like to acknowledge the RMA staff. Dave Bryant is our chief project special projects planner, dealing with general plan updates and things like that and special projects. Aaron Bach is our project processing chief, and he's processed normal applications from land entitlements where we've been doing over 30 a month for the last 13, 14 months now, consistent, so at levels we've never seen before. Hector Guerra, our environmental chief planner. We've expanded our operations to include working with sister agents... We've expanded our operations to include working with sister agencies, we're doing stuff for Public Works, but we're also doing stuff for HHSA and outside agencies as well. So we've really expanded our environmental planning division. Jason Garcia Labou, who is our permit center, is bringing in record numbers of building permits and processing at the permit center. And of course Dennis Lehman is our building and housing manager, and he's doing outstanding job, not only at the RMA, but with the implementation of the new facilities for the county. But also it goes beyond that, it's the Public Works team, Reed and his team, and then Fiscal as well with Sherman that keeps it all, keeps us all in check. We really, a few years ago, I showed a presentation breaking down the silos that Mr. Spada had really implemented at the RMA, and we are in a very interactive and collaborative environment at the RMA currently between all of the different departments, it's truly a team effort. And beyond that, these projects that we're going to mention today, there's an outstanding and an extensive community outreach that the RMA has probably never seen in its existence. We're out in the community many evenings a week, informing the communities, but also obtaining their input on these types of projects that we're moving forward. So with that, I'll start the presentation, and again, this is just top of the waves because we've got a lot, a lot of projects, we can't talk about them all, but we're just highlighting a few of them as we go forward. So as far as the general plan accomplishments and the implementation of our general plan, this last year we did the climate action plan, and the implementation of that is through an emissions inventory where we keep an update on that, and we monitor and track using protocols and a tracking tool, and we do, we do an annual report on that. And the conclusion of this year's first annual report was that the growth is a little lower than projected in the unincorporated area, so there's lower emissions than were projected in the cap, and thus the county is well on track to achieve its 2020 target. This year we'll be looking at maybe extending that target out to 2030 to develop that because as we're getting close to 2020 already. So we also, your board approved a SGC Sustainable Highway Corridor Plan for Corridor 99, and that plan really serves as a foundational planning document to guide our future plans along the corridor, and it's really focused on our economically disadvantaged communities, and it provides sustainable planning practices and standards and strategies for our abundant agricultural and natural resources between the communities, as well as what we're doing in the communities to improve the conditions there and encourage economic development. Just a couple highlights there is Young's Trucking was able to go into Tipton, and had we not done our general plan amendment and updated the Tipton Community Plan, there would have been a zone change required, probably about $13,000 or $14,000 of expense in four or five months of going through the process, whereas after we've updated the Tipton Plan, that was a buy right use, they came right in, we actually returned a check. They had already submitted a check for a zone change, we actually returned the check and said, no, you're good with this new update. And another example is, you know, we've really sped the process for zone changes in the county when we needed to. We were highlighting, maybe a year and a half ago, we were highlighting that we put a family healthcare network project in Terabella, and it went from, from the starting gate to approval in 60 days for a zone change, and we were touting that. Well, this last year, we put, because of the updates to the community plans, we put a family healthcare network in Traver, and straight by right, straight building permits. So we've really streamlined the process of getting development in our unincorporated communities, and it's showing in the types of projects that we're doing and getting services and opportunities into those communities it hadn't seen for quite a while. Another update was to our safety element. This was adopted by your board back in November, and just to highlight a few of the things that we updated in that, this is part of our implementation of our settlement agreement, but is also required to do before our next housing element, so it all fits into place. A couple of the areas that we focused on is mapping areas that are vulnerable to fire, wildfire, fires, as well as flood hazards, and we did a creative overlapping where we took flood dangers with sloping and fire, and really designated some areas that would be susceptible to some heavy runoff and debris runoff if a fire were to happen in that area. We also updated the FEMA maps and incorporated that into our general plan. We updated and added a number of health and safety policies in the general plan as part of that process. The Complete Streets Program was another success, beginning back in 2013 through funding through TCAG, and I know Ted was here earlier, maybe he's here now still, I don't know. Maybe we'll be coming back to him for additional funds. Your board just recently, this year, adopted Plan, the Phases 2B and Phase 3. Last year we had Phase 1 and Phase 2, and overall, there's 26 roadways that were designed to 30% design, and the reason why that's important is when we go after grant opportunities to fund those projects, having a 30% design makes us in much more competitive position to obtain and win those grants. So that's why we've done that. We've, have over 16 communities have complete street programs now adopted, and we're looking to go forward with that. We have one last one that will be coming forward with Three Rivers as part of their community plan. Here's some of the planning activities that we've done, these are general plan amendments, zone changes, and some of the plans, I just touched on a couple. The Driven Construction was a zone change just outside of Tulare that has some industrial facilities on it. Embry Asset Group was a zone change near Poplar for Dollar General. We have a gas at Said was just south of Porterville for an expansion of a gas station and some other things there. There's Daryl's Mini Storage out on the west side of Visalia, as well as we've drafted the Tree Mortality, Tree Removal Program Plan, the Agricultural Conservation Isment Plan, Plainview Sewer Feasibility Study, those are some of the planning activities that we've done, as well as the ones I mentioned in detail earlier. In 2016, a total of 272 projects were processed through the RMA, subdivision maps, parcel maps, use permits, those types of administrative permits that were approved by myself as director, planning commissioner, and your board. These projects represent the most in any one year since 2006. And then again, this is just the top of the waves, but the first one, Sheets Custom Tilling, there's a use permit for our final site plan for 126 unit multifamily self-help out in Goshen, that final site plan went through. S&amp;S Metal Fabrication, that's just outside of Kingsburg, that was one that was located in Kingsburg, came to Tulare County to expand and really took a dilapidated type of eyesore and is building a new building there and providing additional jobs and income and taxes to Tulare County. Van Cleef is a, again, another, is a contract pre-mold fabrication, it's up near Kingsburg but within Tulare County as well. Seton Farms continues their expansion. Daryl's Mini Storage is in process now. Large expansions and consolidations within the ag sector, cold storage, this is talking about four-star fruit, but Foster Farms is undergoing a very extensive expansion in their organic feed mill, and we're talking about other projects as well. Embry Asset Group, another, that's another Dollar General in Rosy. So this is just the top of the waves. We've got, again, 272 projects were approved last year. But then we also talk about the major public work projects. We did, the Deer Creek Bridge was completed last year, the Sontag Ditch Improvement, there was Safe Routes to School Projects in Terabella and Tulleville, there's Road 108 Street Improvements, approved overall county-wide Safe Routes to School Plan, installed five different intersections with all-way stops and another 10 that had one-way stops. So those are just some of the projects of Public Works that we're working on. But next year, some of the ones that were awarded or programmed into next year's program include 18 bridges, that's just an outstanding amount of bridge work that's coming, coming up in the next few months or a year and a half or so. Also some additional Safe Routes to Schools, and some improvements on Spacer Drive out there south of Tulare. Amendment start ordinance code, last year in September, we did the interim zoning ordinance for the medical marijuana entities. We implemented a water conservation program for the county service area of number one. The administrative enforcement of ordinance codes, we looked at ways to revise that again, that was back in May, I believe, or last year, or actually March. Updated our general, or our building codes to the 2016 building codes, that took effect on January 1 of this year. We've changed the speed limit in 12 different road sections in the county and through that ordinance, as well as implementing the emergency ordinance regarding non-medical marijuana back in December, and then we took further action this year to extend that for 22 months. As far as the housing element accomplishments, the housing element was adopted back in 2015, certified by HCD in December of that year. SB 244 requires to look at our disadvantaged communities and recognize and report on our legacy communities, and we also had Housing Element Action Plan Program 9 that included a lot of looking at infrastructure, needing to prioritize and identify deficiencies in infrastructure, and through an SGC grant, a Sustainable Communities Planning Grant that we obtained, we've been out in the communities doing extensive, or intensive and extensive community outreach, talking to the CSDs, the PUDs, the mutual water companies, gaining all the infrastructure analysis that we can, and again, this is almost like our Complete Streets, where we're creating a database of what we have and where we're deficient, we're also talking to the communities and obtaining priorities. So the citizens of a small hamlet will be saying, this is our priority, this is really what we need. So therefore, as we obtain all this, we're going to be coming to your board actually next week for a GPI to establish 10 community plans, 11 hamlet plans, and six legacy plans, all out of this grant that we obtained a few years ago, that will identify the infrastructure, identify some zoning, and do actually implement some zone change so we can continue on that process of more by right development. But this will help us going forward when we look for grants for infrastructure improvements, sewer, water, we've got the, we've got the information, the data at hand, and we actually have community outreach, and so we've obtained the priorities of those communities, and that will go a long ways when we go to look for grant opportunities for that. And then finally, this year, we have a net total gain of 139 units, housing units, we always track this as part of the housing element update. We're on track this year, we're higher than we were last year, this year to date, we're at about 113 units, or two months ago, we were at 113 units. So we're going to surpass the new construction, and once these self-help homes and stuff get going, that'll really kick up the numbers as well. We've got a number of housing projects. With that, I'd really like to acknowledge your board and the CAO for really implementing a strategic management program that we've really fully immersed ourselves with RMA, about being open for business and getting things done by right where we can, community involvement and outreach. I think by the numbers that we're doing, it really shows that it's on the right track. And with that, I would end my presentation and request that the board hold a public hearing and review and accept the general plan and housing element and authorize transmission to OPR and HCD.
Any questions or comments by board members before we open the hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments from members of the public related to this item. Please state your name and address.
Michelle Moore, I live in Tulare. This goes along with the presentation for the children previously, I think that the county might want to consider the HUD to amend HUD also, because giving a family five years in one of the units and then kicking them out onto the street is doing them a disservice, and that happened in my own family with my daughter. So now we have a family of five who doesn't have a place to live. They stayed a couple of months with me, and now they're out at his parents' house, so they have a little bit more room. And when your granddaughter comes up and is in your home, and I like to put their pictures on the refrigerator that they've done, and she's asked her mommy, mommy, when are we going to get a refrigerator so I can hang my own pictures on there? That really concerns me. And for the health of the children in our community to kick the family out on the street, this all goes together with the county housing project here that we were talking about. We're going to be building all these new units, but we really need to give a person more than five years. And then after that five years, the husband had a position and then he lost his job. So they're in the same shape as they were before. My daughter was able to obtain a position at Coia Delta, but it's still not enough compared to what the presentation previously about the children, it's not enough to afford an apartment. They can't even get a two-bedroom apartment, then also because they're a family of five. So they have to be looking for something that's a 3-2, and there is nothing out in the county that's $700 or $800 a month like it used to be. Everything is $1,000 and over. And so for, I think that that needs to be taken into consideration, the HUD, and your decision to just limit the county to a five-year plan. Thank you.
Any additional public comments?
Good morning, my name's Pedro Hernandez, live in Hanford, California. And I'm with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, I work here in Tulare County. So I have a couple comments, and I'm going to hit on the progress report of the general plan and the housing element. So these comments, we work extensively with disadvantaged and unincorporated communities throughout the Central Valley and East Coachella Valley, and in Tulare County, I work in Matheny Track, Tulleville, Ivanhoe, amongst many others. So these comments are meant, you know, in the spirit of collaboration and working towards the same goal of affirmative leave, further in fair housing and sustainable communities here in Tulare County. So I want to first commend the county in many of the projects that were, that were brought up initially, with like the Sustainable 99 Corridor Plan, successful implementation of SB 244, Action Program 9. These are all programs that again are creating databases to, you know, apply for these grants, you know, because we all know funding is an issue. So these are, you know, positive steps that the county is taking to address some of these issues of, you know, being a rural county. However, there are some comments I'd like to make to supplement these. First of all is to make more active efforts through all the agencies to sustain public participation in these public processes. I do understand that there is, you know, new levels of public outreach for these surveys and everything, I do participate in them as well. But we also need to make public outreach for, you know, meetings like this in the county chambers as well, you know, to use these communities for more than just data gathering, to make sure that they're here to see how the processes work, to make sure if they do want to make public comments, that they are notified with significant time to make work, childcare, and living arrangements regardless. Not to say, again, I'm not making, I'm not making the claim that no one is doing that, but this is a concern to really fully involve the public. And also, this can be leveraged to secure further grants as well. Next item is if there are any communities that are not slated for updated community plans, there should be a program or a plan to complete these programs. I understand again that the last round was, is completed in part through a SGC grant, but if there are any other communities that are without proposed updates or, you know, very old plans, these should be also considered as a priority. Farmworker housing is also tied into affordable housing, and so this is a concern, and the progress report is mentioned that there is monthly meetings with the Agricultural Committee to establish a plan with the private sector in about 20 months or something, or 18 months, that's very vague. I would have liked to have more specific updates in the progress report.
Your three minutes are up, would you wrap up, please?
Yes. And finally, with the code enforcement, I do understand that it's very reliant upon resident reporting, but if the county and the appropriate agencies would make more effort to notify the public about the proper contact information, this would only expedite the process, this would only create a better database to address these issues, and it would also, again, help us meet the federal... would also, again, help us meet the federal housing act. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors for action. Move for approval. Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I might say too, it's a, it's a very commendable report, and again, I want to thank the agency for their diligence and coming forward. I know there's the, we see these reports, and it's, it's, it's the tip of the iceberg is all the work that it goes into preparing them and getting to this point. When you think about having gone through the worst drought in the history of the San Joaquin Valley these last four years before thankfully this year, it's a wonder we were able to build very many houses or units in the, in the corporate community, because that's a difficult thing when you haven't got water. And I'm sure a lot of the homes that were destroyed, buildings that were, that were destroyed, in many cases were houses that didn't have any water, and they probably weren't in a kind of condition that people wanted to invest putting in a new well for, for, for a dilapidated kind of a home. So I, I think it's a great, really, report and progress in spite of some very trying and difficult times. And I do anticipate that we will see a growth this year again, because I believe we'll see water tables starting to respond, and people will be able to build homes again and, and put in wells, or their wells will, will come back to life and, and, but very encouraging, and I know the staff is just, is moving along so quickly. And on the public outreach, I have been to many of these events, and the, the staff makes a very, very diligent effort for public outreach. And I mean, I commend them, because I know they have to have public meeting after public meeting after public meeting, and, and it, people do show up, and they come, and we provide a lot of time to provide them with food and different reasons to try to encourage them to be there, and I really appreciate the hard work of our staff and what they've done. So, thank you.
Additional comments? All right, we will now conclude the timed item and move on to item number 22, which is an item related to Tulare Acres Professional Center. John Hess will introduce this item.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Hess, WCAO, General Services in Calata Projects. So very quickly, this is a consideration of sealed bids and any oral bids for commercial leasing space at the Cigna property, the Tulare Acres Professional Center. About 15,000 square feet of space is available out there. This was authorized by the board on March 7, and bids were due last night. I believe we received one sealed bid, which will open this morning, and then after that, make available for oral bids. So with that, hand it back to the chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to open the sealed bids one by one, once they're handed to me, according to my script. They were up there. I didn't, I didn't see any sealed. See drumroll, please? Okay, there it is. Yeah, it's just, boy. Big, big envelope. All right. Let's see here. It's like Christmas, right?
Maybe.
Learn how to open it. Look like a tamale to me.
Hope you didn't eat that. That was just bad.
All right, we do have one proposal, and I'm going to announce the name of the bidding company. The bidding company for this item is Wells Fargo Bank, N.A. They would like to lease approximately 15,316 square feet. The proposed base rent per square foot is $1.85, and the term of the rent is for eight years, as proposed. I will now call for oral bids from anyone in the audience. Okay, seeing none, I will close the bidding period and refer the bid back to John Hess for additional comment and detail.
So all of those are consistent with the specifications that were released by the county, and so this matter is continued for further review until next Tuesday as agendized for.
And I will continue the item until April 4.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. First time ever had to do that kind of a thing here, so it's a little interesting. Thank you for coming. All right. Now we will move on to item number 23, which is a request from the County Administrative Office to approve an amendment to the agreement number 27551 with Conway Consulting Group for Special Consulting Services for Energy Governmental Projects.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. The matter before you today is a proposed approval of an extension or an amendment of an existing agreement with Conway Consulting Group. And let me say as part of the background, Connie Conway is no stranger to this board and to this county. She has acquired an extensive body of knowledge and experience, serving in a number of distinguished capacities, such as a supervisor of this board, the chair of this board, the president of CSAC, and the Assembly Leader of the California State Legislature. As a result of that experience, we have asked her to provide to this county a number of specialized services to help us with regard to the statewide transportation improvement program, temperance, flat storage, and flood control projects, air board policies and regulations, and other specialized services. The reason is that the, the net effect of these services will benefit Tulare County by promoting public safety, by obtaining funding for road projects, by promoting economic development from the jobs potentially created from these projects, and importantly, by promoting public health with an assurance of adequate water supply from possible storage and flood control projects. Notably, most notably, as a result of these services, the consultant has assisted this county and the Tulare County Association of Governments by providing extensive services in connection with highway improvements, and we may have some information provided from public comment with regard to that. So in sum, based upon the knowledge, experience, and results of Ms. Conway, we're recommending another amendment to the agreement to extend the contract for six months at a contract amount of $24,000. That concludes my presentation. So to wrap it up, it's respectfully requested that the board approve an amendment to an agreement between the County of Tulare and Conway Consulting Group, an amount not to exceed $24,000 for specialized consulting services, and number two, to authorize the chairman of the board to sign the agreement upon review and approval as to form by county council. That concludes my report.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No, I'd just like to say that Connie's done an excellent job of creating bridges while she was in the Assembly, to all these different people that we deal with to try to get approval on our projects and different things, and you've done a great job, Connie. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Choclean?
Yeah, I just have a, a couple of questions, other than her fantastic charisma and all that, Connie. We have a, a state lobbyist that we, you know, did some rounds with last week. What, what is the difference in, you know, what Yoder's group is doing and Ms. Conway?
Thank you, Supervisors Choclean, members of the board. That's an excellent question to which I can provide an answer. These are specialized services that really drill down into very concise projects for which this county needs a great deal of help. Our lobbyist is very general, represents a number of counties and other organizations, which means the activity or the scope of work is spread on a number of or variety of issues, ranging from roads to healthcare to planning, law enforcement, so forth. But these are very specialized for which this county does need the assistance, and in particular for Highway 99, which is so important not only to relieving traffic congestion, reducing greenhouse gases, but also generating a great deal of jobs. These are specialized on-the-ground services for which this county is privileged to benefit from. Would there be some comment with regard to this in particular?
I know how much Connie hates the microphone like I do. I was going to ask Connie to maybe come up and just kind of say maybe what, what you're working on now, and, and what's the climate environment that you see for us in the future? And you have better jewelry than Yoder.
As, as always, we're fighting for crumbs. Thank you. I'm happy to be here, my privilege to be here, and I enjoy the opportunity to work with all of you and interact with you in particular. You know, I love this county, and furthering it is, is always the motive and always the goal. The difference between a lobbyist, what a lobbyist does, and I am not a lobbyist, they, they register and sign things, and they are specifically, specifically involved with legislation. So your lobbyist should be in legislator's offices, should be following that legislation for you, and should be, you know, lobbying on your behalf on legislation that would impact the county. What I believe that I do is, is certainly, you know, I'm not, don't ignore the fact that legislation exists. I like to take it to a different level, and it's always with the goal of, obviously, and you all know this, and I know this sadly, because I used to sit where you are. I'd also like to say I am not pretending to be the, another supervisor. I am no longer a legislator, and I, and I'm, this is not the role that I play. But you are literally fighting for crumbs, you know. 80% of your budget here is mandated by the state. State mandates, with their lovely bills that they have, and they send that down to you, and then you've got to figure out, first of all, how to fund it and how to implement it, and of course, then, along with that, you bring staff. Last week, for example, I spent a couple of hours in the horseshoe, if you will. The upcoming appointment of a member of the California Transportation Commission will be of great importance to this county. There's big, currently a big fight, there's an empty seat, it has been empty. The person that held that seat would like to have it back. That's not happening. I want to be careful with what I say here, with information, but I believe it's imperative to the Central Valley, but in particular to Tulare County, who fills that seat. Our staff, your staff, does a wonderful job in keeping Tulare County in the forefront. I like to take it a step further. I want to make sure that you all have direct access and have a, a voice in who will fill that seat, because that impact down the road, you know, can be tremendous to us. Whatever we get, whatever we receive, it all comes at the hand. Interestingly enough, in my time spent in the horseshoe last week, I also spent some time with a former staffer, who is now the Deputy Director of the California Transportation Commission. And I was really glad that he was promoted and got this opportunity, also glad that I hired him a few years back, because it's that kind of access. And you guys know that politics is politics, but relationships are relationships. And so a lot of the work is relational, but I also strive to keep you in the loop of what's happening, how that's going to impact you down the road. I do take the privilege sometimes, I agree that Tulare County would host an event that's going to happen next November. By hosting, it just means it's here, so it's no cost to you, but it's going to attract, it's the emerging technologies. The commission is having a big meeting, it will bring people to the county, and also we will be in the driver's seat for how that funding gets spent and where it's put. It's keeping Tulare County in the forefront, always pushing us forward, and the best issues, the best use of the opportunity that we have for relationships to bring the county forward.
Chairman, if I might add, kind of in a form of a question, but also in a comment. We have found it very interesting in this process of trying to promote Temperance Flat about what appears to be opposition, if you will. And again, it's not like we see it has to be one or the other. Our, our thought is that with the $2.7 billion of Chapter 8 funding under the proposition for surface projects, that that includes both Temperance Flat and Los Vasos Carros and, and Sites Reservoir. But we're finding in the governor's office that we don't really have a friend there.
Sometimes friends are very hard to find, supervisor.
For some reason, this governor does not seem to look favorably upon, upon Temperance Flat. And, you know, so Connie's relationship with this governor and so forth, I think we just have to get him convinced this is a good project, and we're not in opposition to Sites Reservoir. We're seeing ourselves as being a, a complement to that project. But I can tell you that it's, there are many signs of, of not getting the kind of warm and fuzzy feeling we'd like to see, because the governor appoints the members to the commission, the commission is the one who allocates the funds. And if, if, if they get a strong vibration from the governor's office, I don't like Temperance Flat project, do not fund it, or give it some kind of very minor allocation, I'm fearful that's going to happen. I, I look for every opportunity and friend that we possibly can have in a relationship to try to change that thinking. But it's, it's very real, and it's, it's problematic and troublesome to me, because I really think we have a great project, really helpful to the state of California, particularly to our region, and everybody ought to be in support of this project, but it ain't that way.
It's, it's surprising to me, having been part of the negotiations for that, that measure. Those two sites are specifically designated for some of that funding. Temperance would be further down the road, so why isn't it first, and why isn't getting attention? There are, there are reasons I can tell you why Sites is more appealing to some folks. It's love to have that conversation with you and tell you my feeling on that, especially with conversation that I've had, but we, we definitely need to do some work. But as you know, it's, it's little funding, and it's who's first in line, and who has that relationship in order to make things happen. So it, it strikes me as, one of the things I learned when I was in Sacramento last week was about the, the transportation bills that they've been arguing about and fighting about for how long or whatever. I was told that, at that time, also had an opportunity to speak to both the pro team and the, the speaker, and those are going away, there'll be a negotiated deal. You know, there's a minority and a supermajority in Sacramento now, so I'm not sure where your local legislators will be on this. It will definitely impact the county, whatever happens. It impacts every taxpayer in the state of California, whatever they're going to do. But they're negotiating some, negotiating some deal that will bypass the legislation. And, you know, it's always my goal to make sure, okay, whatever that deal is going to be, where's Tulare County in that deal? If we're all going to pay for it, and we all have to suffer through whatever is done to us, sometimes that's how we feel. What are you doing to us now? Where do we stand? How can I make sure on your behalf that you are well-represented in whatever happens in the middle of all of that? So, and who knows what will happen tomorrow? You know, that was last week's deal, okay, scrap the bills, we're gonna, we're gonna roll with some negotiated deal, and it kind of rolls back to the, the water bond and the money that's projected. Now, we know that there wasn't enough money for those projects. The Central Valley, farmers in particular in the Central Valley are paying for pumps that they won't turn on. They're still paying for those, and they won't turn them on. So the money sits there. I think everybody has a very good understanding. I'm very pleased, I, I was, actually think it was a great move on this board's behalf and the other boards of supervisors that formed the JPA to further the, the site at Temperance Flat, because there is power in numbers. There is power in, in bringing that forward. Just know that whatever money is available, one, certainly, we understand that. It's not going to fund the whole thing, but if it's a start, and if you guys show up and say, hey, we are willing to make this happen, there's a definite reason, and there's a definite hierarchy, and Sites Reservoir would have precedent over Temperance, but Temperance is directly mentioned, so we have to figure out what appears to be, you know, who decided the hierarchy, and why does it get to be that way?
Connie, you may want to be aware of this, but the, their, Temperance actually is ahead of Sites in many ways. We have, we have a feasibility study, $36 million spent by the Bureau. There is no feasibility study for Sites Reservoir. If they gave them an allocation today, they are not in a position that they would be able to do anything with that money. They'd have to have, as a condition, they have to have a feasibility study before they could actually spend a dime. So it's a funny thing that we have a project that is actually in a better position to move forward. Senator Feinstein's bill has $600 million in for storage. We think she's thinking Temperance Flat with that money. We know it's a combination of federal, state, and local dollars that make it happen, and we're prepared to work forward and make it happen. But we have to have a share of that, that Chapter 9 or Chapter 8 money of, of the proposition to make it work.
We need to make sure that.
Before we get supervisor-worthy going on tree mortality, you do have one more comment back there who's waiting to speak too, Connie.
I would just add real quick, I used to joke and tell people when they would come and visit me in Sacramento, hey, this is Sacramento, we do shoot the messenger. And so perhaps we need to take a closer look at your messenger, who's delivering your message. It sounds very crass. It sounds very crass, but I'm being very, basic and very honest with you sometimes. Legislation can be great, depends upon who the author of the legislation is, what happens with it. So, it's getting in front of the right people, and it's making sure that they are hearing your message, and that your messenger is succinct and delivers it in a way that Marty Lansky once said, "The art of politics is letting your constituents down at a rate that they can handle and still vote for you." So, so let's work on the, on the messenger, and, and thank you for this time. And as you guys know, I mean, I try to touch base with you, not to be a bother, but I'm always available, and I appreciate the opportunity that you've given me in the past, and I'm hopeful that you'll extend my opportunity to work on your behalf and on behalf of all of Tulare County. Thanks.
Mr. Theodore T. Smalley, you'd like to make a comment?
Ted Smalley, Director of Tulare County Association of Governments. In response to the question of some of those successes or direct things that have gone on, I'll bring up a few. Ultimately, this is about us having someone that can really help with the strategy and efforts that are needed in regards to dealing with what's a very complicated political mess when it comes to transportation. But two examples to give you of successes already. One is Betty Drive. City of Isaias and TCAG were at a point of great frustration trying to get Caltrans and the Railroad to agree, to get agreements done for the Betty Drive project. We were at risk of losing $5 million or a placeholder of that. Ms. Conway stepped in and helped, and, and the team effort of that coincidence or not, all of a sudden, after she came in, a week later, it was resolved. We got the $5 million taken care of, and that project is now under construction contract. Had it not been, TCAG would have had to find a way to fund $5 million more dollars, and the project wouldn't have been under construction. The other one is, again, we spent a lot of time in strategy sessions. The federal government has a new freight program. They have five years of what they have a national competition, for lack of a better term. Each state may only submit three grants. Through the effort and partnership with Mr. Conway, Caltrans, of their three grants that were submitted for the state of California, two were for ports, as could be expected, but the third one was the widening of 99 from Tagus Ranch all the way down to Prosperity Avenue. So, these are some examples of successes. Ms. Conway mentioned about the CTC rep, trying to ensure the Valley has not only a rep, but I would go a step further, the right rep. We need someone that is passionate about 99 and completing that system while also being willing to take care of our needs here, and quite frankly, not just buckling in always to what the Bay Area and LA want. So, those are a couple of highlights. I'm happy to answer further questions if you have them.
Anyone have any additional questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Crocker?
Just comments, none necessarily for Mr. Smalley.
Thank you, Ted.
I, you know, I, I look at this, and I'm very pleased that Temperance Flat is a part of this. I, I concur with Supervisor Worley's comments. It's, it's something that, for the past few months, that I've seen that the project definitely needs a stronger presence in Sacramento. I mean, the, the board members and the staff can only be up there so often, and to have another voice in the, in the administration's ear is something that, that, that really is critical to make sure, and that, and we're coming up on some deadlines that are, that are making it more and more urgent to, to make sure. And so, I would just emphasize that, along with the transportation projects and hoping that the STIP is, is renewed and revolved to get that $50 million that we've got ready to go for 99, I think Temperance Flat, it should be the, the key focal point in the next few months. But, you know, really, just looking at this, this, I, I think that the difference is, is that there's, if we're looking at air policy, if we're looking at, you know, I, I would add on their disadvantaged communities for water projects, I think that could be of benefit, as well as tree mortality, which I think would, you know, all of these are really administrative issues, where the, the legislation has already passed, and is just making sure that people in the, in the governor's office know and understand the needs that we have, and that we are, are at the table every time, and we get more than our fair share, that, that we're, that we're being looked at, and Tulare County is, 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 is really at the seat of the table. And so, in my former life, working for PG&E, we, we dealt with quite a few different political consultants, both locally in the Valley and, and in Sacramento and elsewhere, and this is definitely below market value as far as the dollar amount, so we're, we're, we're going to work you, that's good, that's, you're cheap, so, so I...
Any additional public comments? Okay. Seeing none, we have a motion by...
I'd like to move a proposal of item 23.
A motion by Shuckleyan.
Second.
Second by Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to item number 24 on our agenda, and that is a request to receive a presentation from the County Administrative Office regarding the Strategic Management Review of the Tulare County Registrar of Voters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure and privilege to present to you a strategic management review of the newly established Tulare County Registrar of Voters. In terms of a framework for our discussion today, I will be addressing a number of topics. First and foremost, the critical right to vote, an overview of the strategic management review, then a discussion of the federal HAVA and state implementation plan, which relate to improvements in connection with the area of voting, a position questionnaire audit that was prepared by the terrific staff of the Registrar of Voters. Then I will review budget and finance, information technology, discuss some aspects associated with the proposed department head action, then of course, to provide a number of acknowledgements, and conclude with requested action. First and foremost, the critical function associated with this department is the right to vote. The right to vote is the most cherished value enshrined in our constitutional system of democratic government. Viewed practically, this means that every vote counts, and thus, every vote must be counted, both efficiently and timely accordingly. To fulfill the organizational performance goal of the Tulare County Strategic Business Plan, a strategic management review of the Registrar of Voters is provided today. In terms of a strategic management review, what we are looking at is a proactive approach at setting goals in alignment with the budget, with a focus on efficient and effective performance, and most notably, in the public interest. One critical aspect of strategic management is continuous improvement. So, the four elements of this strategic management review concentrated on an organizational structure, process and procedures, budget and finance, and resources, with the most important resource in this area being information technology. As a result of the controversy associated with the 2000 presidential election, Congress passed in 2002 an enactment entitled the Federal Help America Vote Act, or known as HAVA. All the states then were required to adopt an implementation plan. In 2008, California adopted what is known as the Calif, the state HAVA. The state HAVA consists of a planning element, and the constituent elements of that approach are voting systems, vote-by-mail balloting, provisional voting, accountability of officials, polling place accessibility, performance measures, and best practices. We are suggesting here that the Registrar of Voters develop a planning element, and once that element is prepared, to submit it for consideration and approval. And this would be a prime ingredient of strategic management by taking a comprehensive and holistic view of the right to vote aspect. The next aspect of the review embraced a position audit questionnaire. This questionnaire was completed by the staff members of the Registrar of Voters, and essentially, the questionnaire focused on the functions, daily assignments, and the scopes of work of each staff member. It was distributed by the CAO on March 6, 2017. It was discussed with staff on March 8, 2017. Staff responses were provided on March 12 and 13. And a number of valuable responses were provided by staff. I will just give you some examples, but the bottom line is, based upon this thorough review provided by staff, further evaluation is needed. Some of the examples which are identified in your staff report are coordinating activities with various public entities, researching, interpreting, and implementing election requirements, reviewing and revising office policies and procedures, preparing, issuing, accepting, and certifying legal documents, conducting voter outreach and education, reviewing and filing campaign statements and statements of economic interest, securing and operating polling places, processing voter registration cards and various government records, creating and issuing press releases, repairing and maintaining departmental financial records utilizing automated systems, identifying sources of funding, including potential grant opportunities, training new staff and extra help, and finally, using various information technological processes associated with legal boundaries and property addresses. Having mentioned, after acquiring this valuable information, it is necessary to further evaluate these questionnaires, and it would be recommended that the department head and staff discuss these in conjunction with the Human Resources and Development Department. Budget and finance. The net county cost last fiscal year for the Registrar of Voters' function was a little over $2 million. For the balance of this fiscal year, it's approximately $800,000. It is necessary, as part of a strategic implementation plan, that this department continue to focus on revenue raising opportunities so that the net county cost can be addressed on a sustainable basis. In addition, after the review, it was observed that there should be consideration of time allocation between full-time and temporary positions, invoice payment procedures should be addressed, and as I mentioned, sustainable net county cost is important. For background, net county cost is the difference between the revenues and expenses, and when the revenues are not sufficient in order to address the expenses, that is the net county cost. And so, then the question becomes, what are the financing sources in order to pay for or defray the difference? And traditionally, it's recurring revenues, sub-venti dollars, or it's the general fund, and the general fund being primarily property taxes, sales taxes, and of course, there is a healthy competition for those dollars among a number of other, other departments. So, focusing on the net county cost, the CAO is committed, is committed to working very closely with the department to try to bring about a sustainable approach to this very important financial aspect. The next aspect is information technology. As we all know, the 20th, 21st century in general, and voting in particular, will have a heavy reliance on information technology, and thus, we are suggesting that the department work with the RIT department, as well as the CAO and other departments, to, to look at mapping, addressing, computer addressing, and ballot activities, specifically preparing, disseminating, collecting, securing, and the counting of ballots. And of course, as the analysis proceeds, there will be other improvements that could be made in the area of information technology. All right, before really concluding this presentation, let's focus on our department head, which we are recommending for a permanent appointment. There are a number of aspects that the proposed candidate has in terms of a body of knowledge and experience. First is strategic management. Second is operations management. Third is organizational performance and leadership experience. For example, over a number of years, the proposed candidate has very effectively brought about significant improvements in the clerk's office and making it really a prestigious office for which he has been recognized by the state as the president of the Clerks Association. And as we move forward, we believe that the leadership capabilities of Michelle Baldwin will serve this county very well and very effectively in perhaps one of the most critical departments that we have, because it focuses on the right to vote, which is the expression of the people to elect this board, which then makes the many financial and regulatory decisions that are so important with respect to delivering public services. In terms of the salary, the proposed salary is $104,000, and that is a result of looking at a number of counties, we're trying to focus on what kinds of functions are associated with the registrar, and the salary averages about $100,000. Turning to Tulare County, the range of salaries for all department heads start at $107,000 to $188,000, with medical doctors receiving over $100, $200,000, so the proposed salary would be below the minimum in this county. So, all in all, it is recommended that your board approve Michelle Baldwin at this salary, salary range. In terms of acknowledgements, I would like to thank this board for its leadership, direction, and support, the County Administrative Office for doing the background work with regard to the strategic management review, the Human Resources and Development, Development Department with respect to its work, especially in the staffing area, County Council for the legal issues associated with this matter, and of course, the Registrar of Voters, the department head, Michelle Baldwin, and its staff. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request as follows, receive this presentation regarding the strategic management review, direct the County Administrative Office to return as soon as practicable to the board, consistent with any instructions that you may provide, and then finally, and with a privilege for me to say, to appoint Michelle Baldwin as the Registrar of Voters and authorize an annual salary of $104,000. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions or comments from board members before I open it up for public comment? Because I do have quite a stack in front of me.
I'd rather wait in here.
Okay. All right, we will now move on to public comments. I have numerous requests in front of me, and for the first time since I've been on the Board of Supervisors, I have a request from someone who asked to be at the top of the stack and go first in public comment, and that is a request from Michelle Moore. You may now comment, and public comments can only be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Moore from Tulare. I am the chairperson for Tulare County for Election Integrity Project, which is an observer group, and a follow-up to your HAVA reports, we had noted 59 violations for the HAVA. So, the, a little bit of background, the Election Integrity Project is a nonpartisan citizen volunteer organization, whose mission it is to advocate for fair and honest elections in California. November 8, 2016, we deployed 14 poll observers to approximately 43 precincts in Tulare County. This report that you have in front of you is an analysis of the 63 incidents recorded that day by nine EIP poll observers who filed incident reports. The violations recorded occurred in the following numbers. Voter privacy, nine. Ballot management, five. Inadequate defective supplies, five. Mail ballot issues, three. Provisional ballot issues, two. Assistant voter issues, two. Poll worker inadequacies, 23. And other miscellaneous infractions, 12. Now, the provisional ballot issues, we had over 11,000 provisional ballots cast in Tulare County. That's really high. We had 234 of those ballots were actually kicked out completely because of lack of signature verificat, well, signature, they didn't even sign the envelope... signature verificat-- well, signature, they didn't even sign the envelope, and a couple of other issues that are in the report, I didn't. I would like to point out our poll worker, the inappropriate and unlawful behavior. Poll workers at seven precincts were reported as hostile to observers, and inappropriate behavior on the part of poll workers was observed at nine precincts. Several supervisors were reported as highly hostile. All citizens have the right to be involved in the electoral process and to observe every aspect. You have in the packet there, I attached the California Voter Bill of Rights, and I would ask that you pay close attention to number nine and number 10 on that list. And sometimes they are, we are given the guide to poll watchers, which number two, converse with the poll workers, we may not. And regarding to the election process, we are, they think that we have to talk to the Elections Division Manager, which is not consistent with election code. The election code states that we can speak with poll workers as long as we do not interfere with the conduct of any part of the voting process. We usually only speak to the chief, and the chief makes the recommendations. We don't, we aren't there to cause any kind of problem or issue, we are there observers. And with that, I do have several observers who would like to speak on what they observed during the elections. Thank you.
Thank you. I next have a request from Lynn Petersdorf.
I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing this opportunity for us to speak. I attended training with E I P. in the fall, and I was totally impressed with their professionalism and their bipartisan attitude towards voting processes. I attended two precincts on election day, and one was Exeter and one was Free Rivers. I'll just mention a few of the violations and incidents that I recorded, of which I have about, I don't know, I have five pages of incident reports with multiple incidents on each page. One particularly concerned me was voters were allowed to vote at tables with no booths, no barriers between each voter. They were close together, side by side. They were excused by the captain as saying, it's, when I questioned her, she said, "It's okay, they have to, they have to because we don't have enough barriers." And then another couple who were discussing their ballot as they voted, and I asked if that was consistent with voting procedures and with the election code, and she said, "It's okay, they're married." And the extra booths, I arrived at 7:00 a.m., the extra booths eventually arrived at 10:30 when I reported that to E I P. And we do have a board of attorneys that were available for us to ask questions of through our, our E I P. leader. Okay, so, the other issue was provisional ballots. As the morning progressed, I could see that more and more provisional ballots were being handed out. There's a whole series of reasons why a person might need a provisional ballot. But when I asked the chief, what she seemed to see, what was the percentage and why it seemed so high and it was increasing as the day went on? And she said, "Most of them were because they left their ballots at home, and so they were not, you, they were not told from what I could observe, the ones that I could see." I didn't hear anybody explaining to those people that they could go home and get their ballots. They were given provisional ballots, and sometimes those provisional ballots, there are a lot of procedures that go along with counting those, there's more opportunity for mistakes and errors to occur. I'm almost done. They, at one precinct, at one poll, a gentleman came in, in Free Rivers, and he was, he's been at the same address for like 20 years, has had no problems with getting his ballot. He did not receive a ballot, so he showed up at the poll to vote, and he did not want a provisional ballot. So he was fairly upset, and he ended up, they told him if he wanted to vote on a regular ballot, that he would have to go to the Visalia office, which he did. He left and he went. I feel like personally, there is a need for the review of the procedures, and especially the voting registration procedures, as well as the education and training of the staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I next have a request from Amy Dickinson Campbell.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Amy Dickinson Campbell. My first question, actually, is not a question, it's a statement. I met Michelle this last go-around, and this was one of the largest turnouts in voting history for the United States, let alone California. The staff members did really an overall amazing job from what I could see, because I live right across the street from the building, and they worked long hours right beforehand, and Michelle is worth every penny, if not more, for what is up on the docket. But Chief Administrator Spada, I appreciate that you asked your staff about what could be, you know, implemented, but what have you done to ask the public? Because there's a lot of us who have some, you know, information that should be involved in this, that will help Michelle do her job better.
Sure. As part of strategic management review, and in keeping with what we have tried to carry out with a number of our departments, and in fact, the Resource Management Agency was one department that presented information during a public hearing, and one of the improvements as a result of strategic management was public outreach, trying to acquire as much information from the public, because after all, we're providing service to the public. So as part of, if the board is so inclined to take action today with respect to the planning element, will be to incorporate a public outreach component, which would do exactly what you're suggesting, which is to acquire input from the public, so that that is considered as we move forward in developing plan.
That sounds perfect, because I have quite a few things that I witnessed personally, and some of it was directed at me directly as a poll watcher. I was attacked personally by Rita Woodward when she was wearing no identification, and it was in quite an embarrassment for herself, the way she behaved. And so I have like a long list that I would love to go over with Michelle and yourself, and I'm sure that the rest of the people here would like to go over that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I next have a request from David Higdon.
I also am a observer with Election Integrity Project. My first item I want to bring up, I retired from the fire department with a 74% industrial disability incurred on the job. Standing for me can be very problematic, especially if I have to stand for long periods of time. Not this last election in November, but the previous general election, when I went to a polling place, I was told that I could not sit, that I had to stand, and that that directive came direct from the registrar of voters. And I explained to them that I had a 74% disability, and they said they were sorry, there was nothing they could do about it, that I had to stand. Is not the county of Tulare, the Elections Department, and the registrar of voters not supposed to follow the Americans with Disabilities Act? I feel as though that I was personally discriminated on in that particular incident. Now, in the November 2016 election, I was at the Delano polling place at the Memorial Again, this year, or at that time and before, the registrar of voters closes the bathrooms at polling places, the public restrooms, even when they don't have to go through the polling place to get to the restrooms. They close the restrooms. This past election, I got there at 6:00 in the morning, and I was there until they had the polls closed and they say, they've taken down, and they put ballots to transport. I don't think that it's necessary to close public restrooms that are not in the same part of the building, and I think that is an issue that also needs to be addressed. I would have figured that there was going to be a larger turnout in that 2016 election than what there was. And there was a problem where we ran out of ballots, and they had grossly miscalculated what was going to come in there. They had some students on the board, as part of the board, and I kind of thought that that was maybe not the best thing in the world, but before the end of the day, I changed my mind on that. They saved them. They absolutely made that a doable thing. And things got so hectic because they were out of ballots and the line got so long, that so many things were happening, and everybody was doing their best to expedite the situation, that something happened where the ballot was going to be infringed. And I myself, although I'm only supposed to observe, and I am not supposed to take action, I took action to protect the ballot, and I roped myself up that action because I took part in what I'm not supposed to take part in. But I do think that there are some issues that need to be addressed, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Next up, I have a request from Rick Parker.
My name is Rick Parker. I live here in Visalia. I've been a member of the Election Integrity System since, since inception, really. We've, I've observed all over the county, basically, three different elections I observed in Dinuba. There are three precincts in Dinuba, and I traveled from one to the other during the The poll workers at the elections are not volunteers. E I P. members are volunteers. We volunteered to go out there. We spend one day, eight, 12 hours, out of every two years, trying to preserve the integrity of our election system, and it needs a lot of help. I've never seen such a bunch of corruption in my life. I didn't get personally involved in politics real heavily until the president we just got rid of. Poll workers aren't volunteers. They're, they're paid, they're remunerated for, for their work, and they're deputized for election day to see that all laws are required and all laws and procedures are enforced. They take and sign an official oath on election day. That means something to me. Now, whether it means something to them or not, I don't know, but it means something to me. They swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of California. Our governor doesn't even do that. They are, in fact, the ballot police. They are supposed to be there, make sure that the election process is, is right. They're the only assurance that the citizens have on election day that their vote is going to be counted fairly, and they're supposed to be treated with respect. Michelle, my wife, David, myself, have all been basically abused for being volunteers. How long do you go back as a volunteer? How many times do you go back and volunteer again after you've been abused? All we want to do is make sure that the, that the election process is right. These people that are paid workers don't understand the responsibility and how to carry out that act. I don't know how to, I don't know how to say it any plainer. What can we do? Do you have any suggestions? You know, it, it's your county, it's my county. I want to see it, I want to see the election's done right. I would, I observed in Dinuba, two different elections, two years apart, one man, electioneering, standing outside the door, handing out little pieces of paper to all the people that he called in, telling them how to vote. Then, this last election, they actually gathered up at one table. You're supposed to be separate, and they gathered up at one table, the chief came and said, "You can't do that." He said, "Get out of here, we don't need you," and she walked away. That's violation of the federal law. What can we do? Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next I have a request from Eric Campbell.
I was a poll observer with the E I P., and I was at the Government Plaza this election, and I've noticed several things, to include, but not limited to, reporters coming in and taking photographs of the voters while they're in the booths, and not while the curtains are pulled closed, because there were no curtains. So, you know, that is a clear violation of Election Code 18541. You know, like pretty much everybody else has said, what can we do to improve? You know, I, I would say better training to, you know, the higher-ups and the lead poll workers, and then trickle it down, because change happens from the top. The guys on the bottom are people, politically correct. The people on the bottom can only do what their rules and regulations tell them to do. You know, they may find loopholes, but that's it. They'll work around it. And one comment was by Rita Woodward about the reporter that she personally escorted around the polling place, was, "I had to let him take pictures. I could not tell him no when the other reporter took pictures illegally. And he's always been so good to us with his articles in the paper." Seems kind of biased. Well, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Excuse me. I would just like to make one other point, just as a follow-up for the remainder of his time, he had a little bit, about a minute. And when we go into a precinct, we don't think that we should be relegated to a four-by-four square stating, "Stand over here," where it's inadequate for us to hear and for us to see the voting procedures. That is not consistent with election code. And we look forward to working with Michelle Baldwin, actually, with Election Integrity Project. We feel that we are a viable and important process in the fair election process. So we are not against Michelle Baldwin at all, and we look forward to this being a separate agency now, so that we could have a better communication with everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more request from Jose Segala.
I'll see you.
Okay. Not here right now. Are there any additional public comments regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion and/or action.
Mr. Chairman, I, my mind, I just wanted to say, first of all, I really appreciate the people taking the time to come here this morning and present testimony. And I noticed a kind of a common theme, what can we do? Well, we are, that's exactly why we're here today. We're doing something. And we, we were aware of some problems, not necessarily the magnitude of the problems, and we appreciate you bringing those to us, because if we knew that, it would have only made it that much, we would have been even more incented to do what we're doing today. made it that much, we would have been even more incented to do what we're doing today, which is, we need to draw attention to this department, make sure it has the proper leadership. We have great confidence in Michelle, having worked with her for a number of years on the Board of Supervisors as our chief clerk. She is a taskmaster. She's kind and she's sweet, but she, she doesn't bridge any kind of, you know, I mean, she will take, she will take care of things. And so we look forward to her leadership there. And I think you will find her also very accessible and open to yours, your input. I appreciate the CEO's comment about the desire to make sure we have public outreach. I hadn't really not considered that myself, but it does make sense, especially with your organization and your ability to be able to give us information, it'll be public at large. But thank you for being here today, and I, just, all it does is really solidify the action that we're prepared to take here this morning.
Any other comments?
I would just echo Supervisor Wordley. I had never heard so many complaints than we had this last election. And it's just frustrating to me to see what goes on in our polling places, and not only in Tulare County, but throughout the nation. And so, we knew we had to do something, and that is why we're here today, and we do appreciate all your comments. Thank you.
Supervisor Crocker?
I just have, and I don't know if this can be answered today, but if there, I'm, I'm a firm believer that easier, accessible voting is better. And I know there's been a lot of budget cuts, and we're trying to be as lean as possible, but if there are any ability, if there's any ability down the road to increase polling sites, then I would just encourage to look at those options. I know it's very difficult, and so if it doesn't make financial sense, and that's, that's one thing, but, and then I, the one question would be, do we, do we have an idea of what revenue raising, what that looks like, as for the, or is that just to be investigated?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Supervisor Crocker, the direct answer is, yes, there are some identified sources from the federal and state government, but they're limited, and so part of the strategic analysis will look at finances. Are there any missed opportunities, or are there any opportunities that we can learn about in order to try to maximize our revenue without having to then shift to net county costs? So your, your question is very apt.
Supervisor Shucklin, do you have any comments about this item?
Um, no.
I, I just want to thank everyone for coming today to make comments related to this. You know, this was a situation that the problems became evident to the Board of Supervisors because of the amount of phone calls and comments that we received from constituents. I was getting emails and calls on Election Day about certain issues. Now, I don't want to take away from the effort and the dedication put forth by the Elections Office employees themselves. I know that they worked hard, put in a lot of time, were in a very stressful situation, but in general, this department was never even a department. It was a branch within the Auditor, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Registrar of Voters Consortium. And the board had absolutely no control. It was very far removed from public input and did not have any guidance from this board other, other than budget. And, you know, it was under the control of an independent elected official, our Auditor, Treasurer, Tax Collector, and Registrar of Voters at that time. Rita had a lot of things going on, but this is a very important function, as Mr. Spada pointed out in his presentation. The right to vote is absolutely critical, and what better way to take input from the public, to make this department be accountable to the residents of this county, than to have the Registrar of Voters Department created and have it be accountable to this board, who has a weekly opportunity for members of the public to come, make comments, bring concerns, bring different things that are happening out there to our attention, so that we can do something about it. So, I feel really very good about this being, this department being created, which is a result of this whole process, and by naming Michelle as the registrar, I think Michelle's going to be an outstanding individual. She had nothing to do with the election in November. Maybe she voted, did you vote? But she had nothing to do with what happened in November, but she is approaching this from a, with, with a fresh set of eyes and a fresh set of ears to hopefully listen to and observe from members of the public who may have different ideas or suggestions. I know that she has done a great job with her organizational skill and people skill here at the Clerk of the Board. I know she's going to be missed here, but will be doing a great job for Tulare County as the Registrar of Voters. I have great confidence in that. So, thank you for this presentation, and thank you for this valuable discussion. Chair will entertain a motion at this time.
Vote for approval. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis. A second by Supervisor Shucklin. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. All right. Item number twenty-five is actually off calendar for today. Counsel, do we have need for closed session at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items A and B are off calendar. Items C through F inclusive remain on calendar, but I do not expect any announcements out of closed session.
Thank you for attending today's meeting, and have a great week. Meeting is adjourned. Ennis? Ennis?